Welcome everyone to the Athens Planning Commission, our Tuesday, March 4th meeting. It is approximately 12:03 PM. We do have a quorum and will likely have the fifth member, Commissioner Nancy Bane, who will be joining us for the Planning Commission meeting. Our first order of business is to establish a quorum. We do have a quorum. The second item on our agenda is the disposition of the February 18th, 2021 minutes. And I know that there, please look those over. If you haven't looked them over, look, looked at them already. There is something on here that will be corrected that it says minutes of the public hearing. It is minutes of the regular meeting. That will be edited out, but other than that, any other comments or questions about the minutes from February 18? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minute minutes as they stand pending minus that one correction?
I motioned to approve.
I will take Chief Tom Piles as the motion and Austin Phelps will take yours as a second because he had his hand raised. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same side. Alright, the minutes are approved from February 18. I do need to bring this up that if there is anybody here today who is going to be speaking on behalf of the communications. If you would unmute yourself and just raise your right hand and basically answer, do you swear to tell the planning commission today and everything you're going to tell them or speak on that you are speaking truthfully and faithfully?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. We do not have any cases, but we do have two communications and I believe it is WODA that will be speaking on behalf of both of these cases today. So the first I'm sorry, communication. So the first communication is Title 41. The Crenshaw Green Apartments and everyone should have received attachments on those. But I guess I'll start with David Riggs, David or Paul Logue, if you would like to speak to this and then turn it over to WODA to speak on this.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We, we do have two projects here, both WODA. The first one we're going to speak on is Kershaw Green Apartments. This is a multifamily building on one lot. We did get some comments back from some of the, but the city and I can talk about those if you would like in the future or farther down the road here. So the first one though is Kershaw Green Apartments.
Okay, would anybody from WODA who is here with us today want to speak to these at all or?
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Tom.
Hi, Tom Simons, I'm with WODA. I, I have a little PowerPoint. Can I share my screen or how? I'm not sure on the Zoom call how that works. Do I just start it or?
You can share your screen.
Okay.
Down to the bottom, there's the green share screen so you can.
I see that. Thank you. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Bear with me. Did I lock up?
You may have.
Okay, there we go. I'm trying that one more time. I apologize. Okay. Hopefully you see a site plan, a colored site plan. It says Kershaw Green there. So Kershaw Green is, it's 51 multifamily units. It'll be located on roughly 2.827 acres off of South Plains Road. This property is part of 30 plus acres. It was just recently annexed into the city. Kershaw Green will consist of 12 one bedroom units, 32 bedroom units and nine three bedroom units. As you can see, the access will come in off of South Plains Road there. There's an elevation kind of give you an idea what the three story building, walk up building will look like for the residents. And then kind of shows you the east elevation and the north elevation. Over here on the right, this is the bike storage area that's required. There's the west and south elevation and I'm assuming you have all these plans in front of you in the drawings. So that was, that's Kershaw Green. And then the second one is Kershaw Tyler Park, Kershaw Green too. Do you want me to go into that or since they're kind of next to each other?
You, you might as well. I was thinking about earlier. These are, you know, parcels that about each other. So let, let's go into both of them at the same time unless any of the planning commission members feel differently. Okay.
So then Tyler Park, which will be known as Kershaw Green two is 56 units on 4.6 acres also off a South Plain road there. And it consists of 15 one bedrooms, 32s and 11 three bedroom units. So just to give you an idea and, and the buildings will have the same scheme, color scheme, et cetera. Elevations are somewhat similar. Both three story walkups. To give you the idea, I know you had the drawings, but here's what I wanted to show you. So as an aerial, you can kind of see the two sites side by side coming in on, on South Plains red. This would be the Kershaw two and the Kershaw green site is, is the top site here. So there they are kind of side by side to give you an idea where the two sites lay. So that's really the presentation. We, you know, we're, we're hoping that we can move forward and get obviously site plan approval or and et cetera, and just work through the process here. And I have, as Joe Burning said, the architect PCI design group, Chuck Garvik, Jayden Engineering and Ann Little from WODA also, we're all on the call for questions.
In, in the, this is John Katozki, in the, the number two site, the Kershaw Green two, how many units did you say total there were there?
56.
56, okay.
Can you show with your mouse where the entrance would be off of South Plains Road? The, just very roughly where the entrance and exit would be?
So for Kershaw two, we'll be coming off of the side road right here. And for Kershaw Green, it's, it's roughly right up here at the top.
Okay.
On, on the site plan, it looked like on Kershaw Green two, that the entrance was right there at the driveway for the the power company, right? For AEP, is that true?
Yeah, it.
Yeah, okay.
The site plan, we're trying to line up across the street from their entrance.
Okay.
So I live across the street at University Estates and I just know at 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, trying to get out of our neighborhood onto 682 is pretty challenging. So I just didn't know if you guys had thought about just traffic and trying to get on that road when everyone seems to come into town that way. And I'm, and I'm new to the planning commission. So let me know if that's not something we discuss here, but that's one thing that comes to mind is just traffic.
Well, that's kind of why we're on Kershaw two, the entrance is off the side road here. It alleviates some of that just turning straight on to the, rather coming off a side street. We've looked at traffic and all the zoning and, you know, your requirements there and have designed accordingly to those. So yeah, we've looked at it. We feel pretty comfortable with it. You know, all the residents that live here in both of these communities, they will not be coming and going all at the same times, et cetera. And historically, most traffic reports analyst will tell you that, you know, multifamily apartment communities have a lot less traffic movements than even like a little gas station or something like that. So yeah, we're pretty comfortable with that. But you live there, so you know a little bit better than I do standing here. So.
No, thanks. It wasn't so much about your plans more. Maybe we need to consider a stoplight or something to let some of this traffic out of these three kind of big complexes, year two, and then the one across the street.
I have a couple of questions and I know that this is kind of early on. How many parking spaces would be in both of these, for both of these developments? And what are the number of ADA parking spaces that you would have for both?
Okay. Joe, can you answer that for us?
I'm looking for that right now. Chuck, do you have that at your fingertips?
Yes. So this is Chuck Garvik, Jayden Engineering. So let's start with Kershaw Green. We have proposed 117 total spaces with seven ADA spaces included in the 117. And let me get to.
You're hard to hear Chuck, for me at least.
Yeah, for me as well.
Okay, let me, let me move a little closer to the microphone. Is that any better?
That's better. Thank you, sir.
Sorry about that. Give me one second to get to Tyler Park.
So it sounded like Kershaw Green was 117 parking spots with seven ADA spots, part of the 117.
Correct.
Okay.
Tyler Park. We have proposed, we have proposed 123 parking stalls for Tyler Park. One to six being ADA.
Six of them being ADA, 123 and six ADA?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other question I had, and I think Mr. Simons, you mentioned this and it was that three story walkups and by that or there, there will not, there is no elevator associated with either of these developments. And therefore my question becomes, you know, ADA or universally designed units, they would be at, on the first floor, first level. Or is that part of the plan?
Yeah, yeah. One, yes, there is no elevator and two, and Joe Burning, correct me if I'm wrong, that all the ADA units are on the first floor.
That is correct. They're distributed throughout each of the floor plans, so they're not all up together.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I believe just to clarify, we have six ADA units in each complex.
Great. Any further comments from the planning commission? What's the target market for these apartments?
You know, singles, families, seniors, it's, it's any apartments would be available for them. It's not student housing.
Any other questions? Again, this is communications. This will come back up as two separate cases. And again, we can deal with them both at the same time, but just bear in mind that they are separate cases as they move forward. City planer?
Mayor Patterson on planning commission, just, just so you're aware, the, the, the WODA representatives from WODA have met periodically in the fall with both members of the Affordable Housing Commission and the Disabilities Commission to talk in more detail about both of those issues. Of course, this is a Ohio Housing Finance Agency Tax Credit Project for, for, you know, income with an income test for availability to occupy these units and both the Affordable Housing Commission and Disabilities, they were receptive to comments from both of them. And I believe with the, with ADA issues in the apartments, they were I don't want to speak on behalf of that commission, but they were pleased with my, my take was that they were satisfied, very satisfied with what they were, what they were showing and the recommendations that came out of that. So.
Wonderful. Thank you, Paul. I, I do have one more question. And again, I, it's something that I don't ever recall having to look at or address is with both of these developments, you know, backing up to the, the pond, will there be, is there a need for some type of fencing to go along? There, since there will be potentially families living in there that who could have young children. Again, I don't know that we, I need to defer to our, both city planner and code enforcement with David Riggs, is there a level of requirement for some type of protective barriers so that someone doesn't wander into this pond and have an unfortunate event?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, the, there's nothing in the code, but the, this board could make that a request if they so desired.
So the pond actually is not on our property. The land seller that were purchasing these lots from will still have control of that. So I don't know what, you know, if we could ask them to put a fence up or require that I, I understand your concern. We've talked about it internally. And we decided enough it was an issue, we probably would approach them, et cetera.
Okay.
But yeah, we, we have also talked about that and appreciate the concern. So let us know what your thoughts are there.
Yeah, it just something that literally has popped into my head. So I'm glad that you have had that conversation and that you've discussed it internally. And, you know, and you, you, you've been doing this for a long time. So I, I would defer to the developer in terms of if you feel there needs to be some level of protection, but again, since there isn't anything in code and I don't remember the last time we had a development near any type of water. So just wanted to make sure that was out there on record. Okay. Anything else going once, going twice? David Riggs, yes?
Mayor, I wanted to talk, just discuss a couple of things with you and the commission here. There, what, with regards to traffic on South Plains Road, State Route 682, we did ask, and I think they did provide, ODOT did provide a traffic analysis for the entrance on the Kershaw Green site. And their analysis showed that no turn lanes were, would be needed, but they did recommend that, that the developer adjust the angle of that driveway a little bit to make it more safe. So there was a study done for the, for that development. And then of course, the one that comes off on Tyler Park onto Lurig Road, that access, just want to make sure everybody's aware, we'll, we'll be in the township. So that road and the responsibility of maintenance of that road on or the access, once you get off of the Kershaw Green two onto Lurig Road, that'll, will not be in the city. That'll be in the township. Also had one other comment that came from ODOT regarding the Kershaw Green site. Looks like there's a little triangle and we need, just need to clear it up. That's located, it's actually part of the Old Hope Farm. I don't know if you can get to, but there's a little piece. It's actually not, not on this property. So we need to clear up with the Alta survey, who, who owns that? And it's actually in the right of way, but there's a little piece of the road to go since the Old Hope Farm, which I think is now owned by, pull it up here, Christopher and Dorothy Pelos, I think are the property owners. And you can see down there in the corner right there, that little triangle is actually in the prescriptive easement, but is off site. So ODOT asked that, that we clear that up.
Are you talking right here?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
So that's just a, that's just a minor thing. We didn't have any comments from code. There were some comments from engineering building, some suggestions from police and some comments from Chief Reimer or Fire Chief, which I think you've addressed almost all of those. I will type those up and get them to everybody for the comments, but the primary one was, was about that access. I wanted to clear that up for everybody. The only, the only other comment I had, and I'll bring it up here. It's, it's of course up to the planning commission, whether they want that or not, but we have a prescriptive easement on State Route 682 here. I wouldn't recommend that we, at some time along this process, we get a dedication plat to, to dedicate that right of way to the city, since we on both sides of the road. Now we should have that as a, as a recorded right of way rather than a prescriptive easement. And that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. So I'm going to go back just briefly, if I may, to the Townships Road. And you made, it was a great comment that, you know, it is township, the township that will be responsible for maintenance of, of that road. Is that Lurig? Is that what it is right there? So Lurig, which also includes snow removal. So I'm just sharing that with WODA so that you're aware. Okay.
Okay. How, how are they going to, how's the stormwater going to be handled?
Chuck?
So they have, this is David Riggs. So the, the developer has provided stormwater calculations. I think the engineering building department reviewed that. There are two detention basins to the north, one on each property to the north of, of each one of these properties that will provide stormwater retention for the site. We're also are looking at some best management practices for water quality. I think there are also, Paul Logue can maybe help better with this. I think there are also some flood, flood plain areas to the north of these properties that will need to be addressed and managed too.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It's actually, depending on how we're looking at it, I believe it's on the west. There's a creek back there, I think old factory or old furnace creek or something like that. It doesn't have elevations for it. It's, but we've been, we've been working with the developer to, to make sure that they're following the standards on that. It's kind of a unique one because we were reviewing it. Of course, it was outside the city limits at that time. And so that creek was not an issue for, for us from a regulatory perspective, historically, that would have been a county issue, but since it's coming in, we've, we had to make sure that it was meeting our standards from all the, from all the paperwork we've seen so far in the site plan reviews and conversations. I fully expect this will be meeting our, our flood damage prevention chapter.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. I misspoke. Those, those stormwater detention basins are both to the west and not to the north. Sorry.
That's all right.
Okay. That makes more sense. Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
I have a question. I'm probably not connected.
I can hear you, Nancy.
Okay, so could you tell me, does the stormwater from University Estates, or at least the road run down into that pond? And the coral, the next question is, is that sometimes a problem for the level of the pond? I mean, I know it wasn't a nice chunk in a piece of Maureen because this is unglaciated. So I guess I'd like to know it's artificial. I just wonder who, I know they, I know what it used to be, but what about it? And I'll say, and maybe I'll just stop right there and say, I think we have to have it fenced no matter what, with the number of children potentially in this house, in these houses. So can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, Nancy. Thank you.
I'm sorry I'm late. I had a scam I had to deal with at the last minute, but be that as it may, I am also worried about a little bit about what it's going to, I went out and drove down there and thought, oh my God, what's it going to look like? They're awfully close to the road. But that's just me, you know, I, I tend to think of Title 41 as being a time for citizens as a citizen's rep. I guess those are the things I'd worry about. The children in the apartment having a place to play as long as it's not in the pond. And the other one would be, oh, the distance to the road. I don't know. It's hypothetical, but how is it going to work? I'd like to know. Kids being kids. All right. I'm sorry I was late.
You're fine. And, and for WODA, for those of you who are Nancy Bane is one of the planning commission commissioners.
And I would like to say that I had experience taking food to people in WODA and I have had friends who had their people go there and the water went out on the east end and they're both very pleased. So these, this won't be age restricted though, will it?
No.
Okay. So what, what do you project will be the actual numbers in this site? One and two, what do you think? Two or three to the, we have examples around here. Is that an unfair question? I'd like to know how many kids are going to be here in these sites.
I, it's hard to say, you know, if, if everyone that leases there doesn't have children, I don't know. I would say historically from our portfolio, there would probably be roughly. Uh, well, you know, I, I'd be guessing at this point, I'd have to look at our portfolio and get a percentage of children in our units. And then I could probably give you a better educated number at that.
A guesstimate would be fine. I guess it's awfully tight with buildings and parking lot for a large number, but you know, that's not, once we say yes, it's a, it's your, your deal. But the other thing I noticed the traffic count was on the 5th of, of January. One of them at least for Carpenter, Carpenter, whatever his name. And I was thinking that maybe if you had it today, you'd have a much bigger stack going left out of out of University Estates and going right out of this one eventually. Because there are so many cars. I mean, I go by there at five o'clock very often going to water aerobics at Beacon, not this year, but before and maybe in the future. And I, I'm always amazed at how the, the stack doesn't even get eliminated on 682 before the sign changes. I don't think it's something you can necessarily change much, but it's something to consider. Austin, I was thinking about when you said that. Okay.
Nancy, might I suggest that we give WODA the opportunity to look at their portfolio and give us a little bit more firm numbers than just making a wag at it to see what, what.
It's going to be a swag anyway, depending on who gets it. So all right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, thank you. Again, there were two, those were two communications for anyone who's just jumped on for Kershaw Green Apartments and Title 41 and then Title 41 for Tyler Park Apartments. for Kershaw Green Apartments and Title forty-one and then Title forty-one for Tyler Park Apartments. Great. Let's, so moving on, report from the city planner and the director for development and code enforcement.
Good afternoon, everybody. Just a couple of items to report this afternoon, the first of which may be of interest of all the planning commissioners, but we do have a, the completed comprehensive plan in its glossier format, I suppose is the best way to put it. As you'll recall, the, the version that was approved by the planning commission and city council late last year was a text-only document. The new, the, this version has all of the exact same language in there. Just has additional graphics and charts and graphs and images and all of that. I will be uploading that to the city's website momentarily this afternoon, and I'll make sure to provide a link to that to all of the planning commissioners, just so that they can take a look at it. By all means, if anybody has questions about that, feel free to reach out at any time to me. I'm happy to, to discuss. The other item to, for your information, the city's Historic Preservation Commission will be meeting on Monday. Part of their charge, this Monday's meeting, they'll be doing a historic preservation review discussion with, for the Uptown District with respect to the Bagel Street Deli expansion into what was Mountain Laurel. So we've been working with the ownership of Bagel Street Deli and their architect to make sure that any changes that they're doing meets the historic preservation standards for the city. That's all I have. Thank you. Any questions, by all means, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi, everybody. This is David Riggs again. I just wanted to let you know that we do have a potential development that's coming in, the nine hundred block of East State Street. That might be a Title forty-one for you guys to review in the future. They haven't actually submitted anything yet, but we've been in discussion with them. It's going to be a commercial, a commercial building, we think. And then just a reminder, April nineteenth to twenty-third will be our spring cleanup for the city and then we'll be going in to move out at the end of April, the first of May. So that's two things that are coming up for us and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, David Riggs. Opportunity for citizens to speak on items not covered on the agenda. And I did notice, well, we had one attendee, but we do not anymore. So Scott and Ryan, unless you see something I don't see, I don't know that we have anybody.
No, there's nobody in attendance.
Okay. Announcements and other business. Our next meeting is going to be March eighteenth noon on March eighteenth. I, I do want to share with everyone that just prior to that regular meeting, there will be a public meeting for the biennial community development implementation strategy. This is something that we did last year and, and every year before that, when it comes to projects that are, could be or are related to CDBG funds. If you remember, what we landed on in two thousand and nineteen was the West Washington and the Schaefer Street crosswalk down in that area on the west side of the city. So I'll be kind of leaning on internally on the city planner, on the director of development code enforcement, David Riggs, and some others. But this is a community engagement event where people can listen and comment on areas or projects that we do see citywide within CDBG eligible areas within the city. And so that will be happening again prior to our next planning commission meeting on the eighteenth noon. Anybody have any other announcements or other business?
Okay. Could I, let me ask a question. So in preparing for today's meeting, I wanted to look at the site plans, but I couldn't, where, where would I find those online? Do I have to go to the city website or, I'm sorry, I've just, you know, I, the stuff that came out from Patty was just an application, it seemed like. It didn't have a lot of, it looked like it might've had some pavement design or something, but I didn't see the, the, the full site plan or elevations or anything like that. So where would I get that?
David. David Riggs, that, it is, it was on the link there. They had the two separate links and there was a whole bunch of different sections in there that you could go to. We also have paper copies available going with, it makes it a little more difficult for us to get those out because we're doing this Zoom stuff, but if you, if you ever need a paper copy of those, you, you would contact our office and we can, we can get you a copy of those. If you're having, or if you're having trouble going, going to those links and you can't get to them, just, just contact us. Thanks.
Okay. Yeah, one thing I'm particularly interested with that development is trying to better understand the stormwater, you know, so the, the tension ponds to the west are, are there? Do they, do they end up percolating down into the groundwater? Or do they spill out into that creek? And, you know, are we adding, I, I wasn't sure exactly, but I'd like to look at some of the detail of that a little bit.
Yeah, I can go over that with you. We have the stormwater calculations here that shows how much they're holding back and, and that kind of stuff as well, some floodplain information. So I can, I can certainly go over that with you if you like.
Okay.
Hey, David, too. This is Scott. We can work with you on the, getting information on the website. If there's a better way to do it. I know we worked with Carrie on how the zoning board packets are presented on the website. So if that's something we need to do for planning commission, we can certainly do that, too.
All right. Thank you.
That's good, Scott. We could start doing that again. And Patty Whitmer did send out those two links. I, I've just pulled mine up. And John, it's, it's got a lot more deep, the detail you're, you're looking for is in that.
But it's there. Okay. I'm, I'm going to try to get back in there. You know, I'm, I'm a bit technologically challenged, so I'll see. I'm sure it's there. I'll just, I, I just got to figure it out. And I, and if I have to, I'll get my wife to help me. She can do that. But let me, let me get back into that. And David, I might give you a call and come in and just take a look at some of that information about the stormwater then, if that's okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, anytime.
And Mayor, I'll work with Patty on seeing what we can do there.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. Okay, hearing no other announcements or other business, someone like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Second, in a second. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. Thank you, everybody. And again, we will meet again on March eighteenth.
Okay. Enjoy the sunshine out there.